Yeah. We have a good one for my agenda today, the next day of the week.
I always think that we like to give our points a little better.
No, we're gonna try, I'm gonna shoot for every day. Um, if we can get some, it doesn't change anything. So if I do, if I forget a name, the next day, it'll just cool. Yeah, once we get switched to a timer, there's a lot of that force. We don't have to work that.
Thank you for your.
Let's call the board of the media of the Elwood City Area School Board combined meeting, uh, April ninth, two thousand fifteen. We're gonna have a roll call, Mr. Zerone.
Mr. Vazelli, Mr. Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Garda.
Here.
Mrs. Grossman.
Here.
Mr. Marova. Mr. Newpower.
Here.
Mrs. Panzera.
Here.
Ms. Petrelli.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Mancini.
Here.
Mr. DeCarr.
Here.
Okay, rise for a moment, a solemn meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I trust that everyone now had a chance to review the minutes of our previous meetings. And if there are no questions, I'd like your motion.
I just got a text from Matt, and it says, "Motion to amend the minutes." I was there at last month's Monday meeting, Mr. Gero didn't have me present in the minutes.
I think he did walk in late, uh, after.
So, I didn't look or check to that, so I just looked at myself.
Okay, we'll, we'll pitch it. All right. And we'll have a motion to approve the amendment. Motion by Ms. Petrelli, second.
Second.
By Ms. Grossman. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. And this is approved. And we'll go to the, uh, visitors. Let's give this Petrac to the moment.
Robin Rogers, parent.
Any, any, on your line tonight?
Not right now.
You know where to find her. Good night.
Good evening, everybody. Just going to introduce our visitor here tonight. We're honored as a community and a school to have such an accomplishment. Uh, we had talked about this last month, and we're able to put it together for this month's board meeting, but I want to introduce you to our state champion swimmer, Taylor Petrac, and her dad is present with her tonight. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Newpower, I think he has, uh, some other comments and something for her, so. She has her medals, and, uh, we'll maybe give her the floor for a second.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, uh, quite an accomplishment for, uh, anyone to do what you've done, and I think, as we talked about it in our last meeting, uh, to do it in the manner that you've done it as a, as an independent, uh, is even more, uh, a staggering accomplishment, uh, to not have the support of, you know, a full team of, uh, other athletes. So we're very, very proud of you, and, uh, we would like to hear a, a little bit about your, uh, experience.
Did I spit out?
Put your medals up. Let me see.
I don't know what you want me to talk about.
Chuck, why? What was the highlight of your, your, uh, tournament, your accomplishment?
Um, well, I went to States, and it was my second year this year, so I was more calm than I was last year. Going as a freshman, I really didn't know last year what it was all like. So having it be my second year, it was, um, more relieving to know what was actually going on. And, um, it starts with, with the oils, and then you get four on max for our district, and I placed second in both my events, so I was automatic. And then, um, I went to States, and actually, the girl from our district, from Geico Catholic, she had actually scratched, so I was number one seed for the fifty and second for the hundred at States, and I got first in the fifty and third in the hundred.
How long have you been swimming?
Um, I started swim lessons ever since I was a baby, but, um, I started, like, club swimming whenever I was about five. So I'm fifteen now, so like ten years. It's a long time.
Still a baby.
That is correct. I have a recite pool.
Yeah, I've club swam with their team, it's rips at Aqua Club of Elwood, ever since, and, um, yep, I, and because we don't have a team, um, that's how I practice every day. And throughout the summer, I keep all my training going, so. Everybody asks me, "When's your season start?" "When it's over." Never ends. I'm with like a mon, one month break right now, but I run track, so.
What trolls play?
Um.
Olympics?
Club or varsity, or both.
Okay.
Both. Um, varsity for, like, for Elwood, just to keep going for my next few years and just play as well as I can. Um, you always strive to do your best, but you can never control how your teammates or even just like other competitors swim. So just best times for me, and, um, they actually, USC Swimming had just lowered their junior national cuts, so look for fifty freestyle, which, what I won at States, they dropped it by a whole second, and for a fifty, that's a lot of time. So, um, trying to go for junior national cuts right now, and maybe if I get this, something new.
Excellent. Well, we should have, uh, a certificate.
First, there are none there. Yeah, that's the first.
Taylor, we have a certificate from the, uh, Elwood City Area School District, uh, School Board of Directors in recognition of outstanding athletic achievement, first place in the fifty yard freestyle, and third place in the one hundred yard free, freestyle at the PIAA Swimming Finals. Taylor Petrac is awarded this certificate of recommendation, so we'd like to present this to you. Do you have a video? No. Oh, geez. You love them, huh? Oh, she's gotta fix her hair.
Yeah, tweeted out.
All right, congratulations. Congratulations to know what a big sacrifice it is for, uh, the family, too, and I know swimming, I'm sure. Your regular run-of-the-mill Little League baseball, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for all the support from the school since early. I guess, sorry, we didn't have a pool. Just roaring.
I said this last month, but Taylor wasn't here. As far as I can remember, if I get it correctly, we're state champions for Elwood City High School. Our girls' cross-country team in the early nineties had a couple. A baseball team in two thousand three as a team. And in track and field, Jake Walker won a gold medal in two months. So Taylor, you're in some very exclusive companies. Thank you for coming.
Right. Thanks. All right, fantastic. Uh, let's go to the superintendent's report.
Okay, just some informational dates. Uh, May fourth, we will have a in-service day coming up for the next board meeting. Prom is May first, uh, the principal room, about their days in. And, uh, normally, I know I'd have our principals talk, but, uh, right now, they've just been pretty much gearing up for the PSSA tests, which start next Monday. Um, grades three through eight, testing window starts then. Uh, it'll continue through May sixth, four weeks of testing, um, and then the, we'll start with the keystone test, May sixteenth, so. End of the year period of time is when, uh, the testing kinda kicks in, and that's all we know that Mr. Keely and Mr. Levese's billings have been really gearing up for. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Gibson, uh, if she has anything that she wants to, and then we'll go kinda down the line, and we'll finish up with, uh, Mets would like to present some things here before they leave.
Just real quickly, the scientists come in from there to, um, teach our first graders some hands-on science. Uh, they're, he's scheduled to be in one April, uh, eighteen, seventeen, so that's very exciting, um, for our boys and girls in, in first grade. Um, this Saturday, we have a nibbles training for all of our kindergarten teachers, special ed teachers, and, um, speech pass, but, uh, and, uh, I just wanna take my hat off to teachers that are willing to give up a Saturday. It looks like it's gonna be a nice day, and we're gonna be in the library working nine degrees, um, on Saturday, but we are very eager to learn new things and, um, share more art, let's see, a pilot kickoff will start, uh, next fall. And we have another week long training also, but the first one is this Saturday. And we have a parent who's volunteered to do a Zumba upon to raise money for our Elwood City Red Basket, and which is our backpack program. So it should be really fun. I'm gonna do some things for the kids so they can bring, if they have little kids, they, they can bring their little kids, and, um, I'm hoping to have a team that will entertain move, that's smaller children, while the moms are in the bath, whoever else wants to do the Zumba thon, um, will take care of the kids, and it'll be a great fitness night for raising money for our backpack program, so we can send food home on the weekends. That's all I have.
Do we have a day gift?
For the Zumba thon, um, I moved it to a Wednesday instead of a Friday, and I think it is, I wanna say the fifteenth of May.
That's a Friday.
Friday's the fifteenth, then it's on thirteen.
The thirteenth?
Yeah.
So I can even, the seventeenth, which is Sunday.
Thirteen. May thirteenth, Zumba thon at Marsa. That's all I have, thank you all.
Question?
Um, right now, we're just, we're getting ready to do the KSA science, that begins May fifth. Um, we are continuing to transition thirteen students from early intervention who have IUCs, um, getting ready to press them, bringing them into school age services, um, working with Miss Wish on suicide protocol as well as district CYS protocol due to the suicide initiative, um, that has to be rolled out next year, and the CYS law to make our protocol consistent with the law. Um, let's give a quick break, but, yes, that's it.
Thank you. Introduce, uh, Greg Smith and Carl Prober from the Mets. Um, they wanted to come talk today about the, uh, the school for the lunch and the breakfast program that they're in charge of, so. Where's yours?
Thank you.
Stand up if you want, or.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, it's been a while. I think it's been since last August since I got a chance to talk with you guys, and just wanted to give you an update on what we've been able to do, and some of the accomplishments that we've had. So, uh, came in with a pretty big, with, meaning, Rich and Mr. Mancini had a big, big goal to hit. Um, the district was down around fifty thousand lunch meals, and with the goal with, you know, it was, have some marching orders, we want to get those meals back, what can we do? So we put together a plan, and what I wanted to do was to share that plan with you, where we are at the date, and then where I'm projecting that we're gonna end up. So, um, Carl, what has been working honestly very closely with the group, we put together, we expanded options at the elementary school, we have five options every day there, we have ten to twelve in the high school, middle school. Uh, we added, uh, and changed the, we added a concept right onto the main serving line, and then we changed that back line from an ala carte only into a reimbursable meal line, 'cause I really thought that that's what we needed to do there. So, uh, and then, one of the keystones to be able to do this was to offer every day a, a really wide variety of fruits and vegetables to make sure that the kids drink the way they should. And according to the, the latest regulations from National School Lunch Program, fruit is, vegetables are really the key to making that thing work. So we offer a lot, we offered, uh, we, we, we follow the sub-group, but we go way beyond, quite honestly, here, what we need to do. So, result of that is that as of the March period, we are almost fifteen thousand more meals ahead of what the budget was when we came in, and it's a little over fourteen thousand six seventy-five to be exact, but, uh, and I'm projecting that by the end of the year, we'll end up doing twenty thousand more meals than what the budget was that, that Rich and, and Mr. Mancini gave me. That, I think that's pretty good, when you consider that we're down forty-one students, and while forty-one students may not sound like a lot, at the rate of participation that we have, that's around forty-five hundred meals alone. So I'm proud to be able to stand here in front of you and say that we, in the first year, if we'd had those forty-one students, we would be halfway towards recapturing that fifty thousand meals. Pretty happy with that. Um, the, Carl handles, if there's any kind of comments at all, we, we, um, quite honestly, there's very few, we've been able to handle them internally. I think we've grown the program, we've really, um, tried to work with the people that were here, and they have a really great staff. Steve has been great with us, and especially in setting it up. Uh, worked very hard in the summer to make the thing work, and I, I, I think I couldn't be happier. Some of the challenges that we do have, now that, in, in, that we overcame, in even getting those numbers, are that the National Lunch Program has, this year came out with a whole grain mandate, that all the, all the products that you serve had to be one hundred percent whole grain. All that's pasta, pierogies, something you wouldn't think of really, pizza, breadsticks, and a lot of those things, quite honestly, are not, uh, have not been accepted very well by the students here. And, and if you follow, and, and they, they haven't been accepted by a lot of students over the country, so. Um, so, uh, but we've been able to manage the program to where we're offering those products, uh, as we need to, but offering other things that the kids like as well. One of, another challenge in doing that is not only do we need to offer those products, but quite honestly, they, in general, cost twice as much as their non-whole grain counterpart. So not only, sort of like a double win, uh, while we're selling less of them, I'm spending more money to be able to do that. Uh, we offered, um, that alone, and this year in particular, we've had a, it's been a interesting weather year, we've had fifteen two-hour delays and three closures. Now, we've pretty much made, I think we've made all the, through April, we've made all the closures up, is that correct? Uh, but it's been challenging trying to make those, you know, trying to make that all work, but, uh, we've been able to do it and grow the business. One of the, uh, another challenge in doing all this has been, while we are literally on a pretty, a, a, a pretty good skyrocketing, in fact, there to get meals, the cost of food is about five percent higher than what we thought it would be. A lot of that is from the regulations that, quite honestly, weren't, and the way they set the regulations up, they don't tell you what they're gonna be before you, before you actually do the budget. They sort of tell you after, they, you know, so, uh, but we're managing, Carl's done a great job in managing all of that now. Uh, I think it's been a really good experience here for us, hopefully it's been a good experience for you, too. Uh, and, uh, I think that the students here, and, and what I get it from the faculty and staff, every time I come, is that it's a real positive, so. Uh, anybody have a question? I'd be happy to answer that.
You know, it's an observation, I'm sure it doesn't mean anything, but, in a town like Elwood City, you go to a group of young men and women who've eaten pasta all their lives, cooked by their grandmothers and their aunts and uncles, and mothers, and tell me it's gonna be whole wheat? Yeah, right. You're not gonna get it.
That's the challenge.
We're alone to account.
That's the challenge, yeah.
Will you repeat? Will you be normally have?
I won't eat it now. I guess.
The absolute worst one, quite honestly, is macaroni and cheese. The elbow macaroni is darker than a tabletop, and so by the time you add cheese on it, the kids won't even touch it, we don't even serve anymore. And quite honestly, that's a commodity product that the government sends you, and I literally almost can't use it, so.
Turn it back, don't say it here. You're just a daddy.
We will be bringing the board a budget in May to consider, and, uh, Renee, we are gonna look at the community eligibility provision between Greg and I, see if it fits, or see if we are eligible for it. We're also probably gonna have to take a look at our price structure at this point. Uh, there is a PDE mandate, it's a federal mandate, that you have a certain price set, a certain price point, because if they're gonna provide you the reimbursement, then you have to be selling at a certain price. So we'll be looking at those couple of issues, uh, when we get to you back, back in.
Now, as far as the CEP goes, I did do some laboring between the time we met today and now, and there is some information, a lot of, I'm not qualified enough to be able to give you all the ins and outs of that, and it's quite, it's, there's, there's a direct certification part of that, that really, that gap did a forty percent mark, and that would come from the state, state would actually give you the, that information. Uh, but we do operate here in school district, which is on that program, and if you would like, I could certainly have the general manager, said the district manager from that school come down and say, "Here's how the program works, and here's how, you know, here's, here's the benefit or not benefit for you."
We'll follow the state and see if we can qualify first, I mean, I don't wanna, 'cause we're not at forty percent at this point.
Not under our cert, I don't believe you are. Uh, we might have forty, 'cause that's pretty reduced, and not under our certification.
Okay, school follow up one minute.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Carl. No, it's your problem. This one this evening was really warming up. Excellent.
Thanks.
There's ice in it, so I'm sure. They brought drinks. I do have a question for you, Mr. Mancini. Prom, you had mentioned, um, price per prom?
Pass. You sell, the way we do the fundraiser now, their junior year is a fundraiser that's offered as individualized, meaning based on what they sell, they'll, that's what they'll pay their senior year. If they don't sell, or fundraise, then standard price is ninety, or no, it's ninety, I'm sorry, ninety.
Is that per couple?
Per person.
How can it be that high? Ninety dollars?
It was higher about five years ago, before we changed our fundraising procedures.
Seriously, ninety dollars per person to go to prom?
Yes.
Wow, I guess we need to bring it back to the school?
For home.
How do the kids afford it?
Good luck with that. If they fundraise, it's not that much.
That's per kid?
Yes.
That's crazy.
Especially when you go to the prom and you're like, "It's a barn with flowers." I just can't believe this stuff. It's a barn with burns.
Okay.
That's too much.
If you're gonna make it right along, um, let's see, uh, Ms. Grossman, would you be able to finance for us that?
I sure am. I will see.
In your folder is the General Fund Treasurer Report for the period March first through March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. The summary of accounts is as follows. ESB, ninety-three thousand, five hundred, twelve dollars, eighty-two cents. PLGIT, ten thousand, three hundred, twenty-four dollars, forty-six cents. PSDLF, one thousand, three hundred, eighty-five and twenty cents. PA Invest, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, seventy-three cents. ESB Bank Public Investment Account, four, wait, four million, no. Yeah, okay. Four million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, forty cents. ESB Cert, Certificates of Deposit, three million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, twenty-eight dollars, ninety-eight cents. Total cash investments at the March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, seven million, eight hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars, fifty-nine cents. I move the Treasurer's Report for the month of March, two thousand fifteen, be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Stevenson. Any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion approved.
Number eight, General Funds Account Payable Report. Is in your folder are the General Funds Account Payable Checks. Included are checks, one zero eight nine seven two through one zero nine zero seven zero, ninety-nine checks and six wire transfers amounting to one million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and one cent. A second batch includes check, one zero nine zero seven one through one zero nine one seven four. One hundred and four checks amounting to two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars, twenty-nine cents. I move that the General Funds Account Payable Checks and wire transfers be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Gardner. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number nine, Capital Reserves Fund Treasurer's Report. In your folder is the Capital Reserves Fund Treasurer's Report for March. The total investments on March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, were six hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, thirty-two cents, and the total available in the checking account was a three hundred and sixty-three dollars, thirty-two cents, for a total available of six hundred, wait, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, sixty-four cents. I move the Capital Reserves Fund Treasurer's Report for March, two thousand fifteen, be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Stevenson. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number ten, Capital Reserves Fund Accounts Payable Report. In your folder is the Capital Reserves Fund Account Payable Report. Included is check, one four three nine, amounting to seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. I move that the Capital Reserves Fund Accounts Payable Check be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Gardner. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
I would also ask that the following ports be made part of the minutes of this meeting. As of March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, Tax Collection Report, Revenue versus Budget, Expenditures versus Budget, Investment Reports, Investment Earnings Report, Athletic Facility Fund Reports, Helling Stadium, Century Club.
Mr. Zerone, you're being part of this evening's minutes.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Number eleven, Quarterly Earned Income Tax Report. In your folder is the Quarterly Earned Income Tax Report as of March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. I move the report be approved as presented.
Second, Ms. Trow. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number twelve, Lawrence County Career and Technical Center Havoc Financing. The Lawrence County Career and Technical Center will be pla, replacing its havoc system, an estimated two million dollar project, with each member district paying a portion of the cost based on market value. I move that the district share in the approximate amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred dollars be paid in options, did we decide A? A, in a lump sum prior to the end of the two thousand fourteen, fifteen, this whole year.
Second. Second by Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number thirteen, Deputy Tax Collector. Act one six four dash two zero one four requires that local tax collectors appoint deputy tax collectors in the case of incapacitation. Rosina Betts, Wayne Township Tax Collector, has appointed William Betts, Jr., as Deputy Tax Collector for Wayne Township. I move that the appointment be acknowledged and approved.
Second, Mr. Leroy Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number fourteen, Repository Tax Sale Approval. Mary Beth Stevenson has submitted a bid of five hundred dollars for a property located at seven thirty Wollpomm Avenue, Elwood City. Tax ID one four dash zero one four five zero zero. In your folder is a bid acceptance form for a repository property. I move that the bid, five hundred dollars, be accepted, and the business manager be authorized to execute the form and return it to the Lawrence County Tax Claim Bureau.
Second, Mr. Gardner. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number fifteen, Consolidated Communications Agreement. In your folder is an agreement with Consolidated Communications to provide local and long-distance telephone service effective April tenth, two thousand fifteen. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Ms. Trow. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Grossman. We'll move on to personnel and transportation. Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number sixteen, Intern, Internship Student. I move that Thomas Murray DCI Career Institute student be, be approved for an unpaid technology, uh, internship, through Supervision of Elwood Lucker, effective. through supervision of Ellen Rucker, effective April tenth, two thousand fifteen, through May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Mr. Trell. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number seventeen, retirements. Mrs. Agnes DeFon, second grade teacher. Mr. Frank Cloud, elementary phys ed teacher. Miss Trish Bluedor, secondary guidance counselor, and Mr. Dave Alondo, department sixth grade teacher, have submitted their resignations for the purpose of retirement effective June third, two thousand fifteen. I move the resignations be accepted.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? I'll just make a comment. Those folks were all here when I was in school. We're losing a, that's it?
I remember the government was here.
Mrs. DeFon was my third grade teacher and I have very fond memories. And a couple of Christmas ornaments that still are displayed on my mom's Christmas tree from Mrs. DeFon. So, uh, we certainly congratulate those folks on their retirement. Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number eighteen, F M L re-lease. I move that Michelle Hall, L- Lincoln High School teacher, be granted a family medical leave for a twelve-foot period effective May first, two thousand fifteen. B, I move that Shannon McGuire, Lincoln High School teacher, be granted a family medical leave for a twelve-foot period effective April seventh, two thousand fifteen.
Second, Mr. Grossman. Question. Officer Stevenson. Go. The family go- family medical leave for May first, does that run into the summer or into the fall?
Probably, I mean, she hasn't put the next part of that in yet.
Family medical leave will be effective from May first to the end of the school year. She's entitled to twelve weeks.
That won't be twelve weeks.
Well, she could choose to, in August, continue the family medical leave. At this point, we're kind of waiting to see what she decides she wants to do. But for May one to the end of the school year, it would be a proportion of the family medical leave. Then the summer comes and then if she chooses to take additional time, she can have it.
Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Brings us to properties and transportation, Ms. Panzera.
Thank you, Mr. President. Facility requests, A, Elwood City Amateur Baseball Federation requests permission to use Perry Lower Intermediate School Playground and Field for youth baseball practice on Wednesdays from five to eight P M. Saturdays from eleven A M. to five P M. from April to June, April now, to June, two thousand fifteen.
That's week days, not Wednesday. I think they want it every weekday.
Yeah, I was concerned with when it starts, I think it's just the entire months, I assume. B, R E C, youth wrestling, request permission to use Lincoln High School cafeteria for wrestling practice on Monday through Friday from November first, two thousand fifteen, through March thirty first, two thousand sixteen, from five thirty P M. to eight thirty P M. I move that the facility request be approved as presented.
Second. Officer, Mr. Stevenson.
Discussion. It's a key. Use of that Perry against school field, that's not going to interfere with the way you want it.
No, that's been a pretty consistent thing. Federation has always treated that pretty well. We don't have anything going on in the field there.
Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Wow. Enough to report there, Ms. Panzera. Next we'll go to student affairs and athletics, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty textbook purchase. The secondary administration has recommended the adoption of the following book. Halander Guitar Magazine by Will Schmidt and Greg Coe. Publishing company is Halander. The I S B N number is zero eight eight one eight eight one three nine two. Book has been on display for thirty days. I move it be adopted and that the administration be authorized to proceed with the purchase.
Second, Mr. Trell. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Twenty-one, special education plan, two thousand fifteen through two thousand eighteen. Special education plan has been on display since March nineteenth. Will remain on display until April sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. I move the plan be approved as presented. Contention upon no changes being made prior to April sixteenth and it be incorporated into the minutes of this evening's meeting.
Second, Ms. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Twenty-two, elementary student handbook. In your folders are changes to the elementary student handbook as recommended by the administration for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. I move the change be approved as presented.
Second, Ms. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Twenty-three, athletic expenditure report. In your folder is the athletic expenditure report as of March thirty first, two thousand fifteen. It reflects total monthly expenditures of fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, fifty-eight cents. I move the report be approved as presented.
Second. Ms. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President, on student affairs and athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Uh, recognition and communication, Mr. Stevenson.
Hello, sir, I have none to report this evening. Unless they just didn't give them. No, they said they didn't, everybody's bad.
Settle.
We did honor state champions, so that's, that's pretty good.
Yes, we did honor terrorists.
Okay, do we have, uh, anything under new business?
We want to discuss the, um, senior privilege.
Share too.
I would like to discuss the senior privilege.
Where's yours?
Well, it came to our, um, I don't know what to say. Found out this week about senior privilege. And, um, I'm not sure, since I didn't have a luxury of speaking with the rest of the board, what your opinions are on it. I had heard about it, went in and spoke to Mr. Mancini, and a couple of people have heard to say this. I honestly didn't think it was legit, because I heard it on the street. But he, you know, he explained why, and, you know, um, listening to his reasonings, I, I understand where you guys are coming from. I think that as a board, we are going to have to make some decisions on how we're going to be notified of certain things, which I'm sure that will come. But after thinking about senior privilege, as you guys are putting it for this last week, um, I have to say I'm against it. And I know, like I said, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but, um, I think that we are setting a bad example. I think that we need to, to provide the education. If we're having problems, we need to hire, we need to hire a teacher to, um, fill the slots so that you have an easier time scheduling. I think that we need to, to look at what we need to do to make that process easier for you. I think by letting them out, that we are opening ourselves up to, first of all, having a hard time tracking them. Because you have kids coming in early, you have kids leaving, um, you're, they're going to be hanging around the school, waiting for their friends. I mean, I just think the, the main thing, my problem is, is that, you know, we're supposed to be defenders of public education. And I see, I feel like this is kind of letting, dropping the ball, saying, oh, you've done enough. I mean, I see your point, I'm not saying I don't see your point, I just think that we can do better for our kids. I think we owe it to them to provide the education for, to be there for them.
Mr. Grossman.
Could we just have senior privilege explained briefly? I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure.
I'll start and let Mr. Lake turn in. Came about through, uh, Mr. Lake coming to me and saying, you know, we're going to have a problem with electives because, uh, students, you know, as seniors full of electives and juniors full of electives, by the time you get underclassmen, well, the electives are full. My comment to him was, my son leaves every day, senior year. We sign him out every day, leaves from, uh, you know, one or two periods, he has that option. Let's look into it. And, um, I think Mr. Lake started the scheduling process today, and, uh, we looked at some other schools that do it. Uh, we saw, yeah, we saw their forms, how they do it. And, uh, we thought that as a senior, um, once you fulfill your graduation requirements, um, we didn't want seniors, maybe who didn't have a job, uh, taking up electives that, uh, just to take classes. A lot of times, you know, sometimes they were in study halls also. So, uh, it gives them that option to, you know, as parents, again, this is an option, it's not the standard that if a parent, you know, signs off and the, the student's on track to graduate. Principal, I believe, guidance counselor looked at the applications, they have to be in good academic standing. They have to be, uh, you know, behavior issues, uh, have to be, you know, under control and financial, any, no debts and so on. Um, and if they went through that process, they were on track to graduate, got their credits to graduate within their senior year, um, taken the classes, um, and not maybe fill up their schedule and affect other students in the lower classes who need electives, we gave them that option. Mr. Lake, do you want to fill in as far as, like, does anything?
Uh, this, something's up. To me, it's an option that the parents agree to. And that's the way we posed it to the juniors when I met with them last week, gave them the information. We did schedule the juniors that are going to be seniors already. The numbers that came in, um, right off the bat were, there was thirty eight students that chose to do that. Out of the hundred and, I believe, twenty in that grade or a hundred and thirty in that grade. So that's where we stand right now with it. Parents are the ones that get grant permission. You could have students stick around and just be in study halls or take a class here and there. You could do that as well, continue to do that. That, uh, that causes issues for freshmen and sophomores when the classes aren't available for them to schedule. We're halfway through the scheduling process and it's been pretty flawless. We only have a handful of elective classes that are closed at this point. So, um, to me, it's an option for, for seniors and their parents to decide. If their parents choose to do it, then, um, I'm in favor.
Question, now, you say, um, that they're on track to graduate and everything, that's including?
What they need next year.
That year.
Standard kid, senior, if you take your eight classes, no study halls, freshman, sophomore, junior year, you're at twenty-four credits. Our requirements are twenty-five. But you have to take four years of English, four years of math, four years of social studies, four years of science. So, going into their senior year, they still need a math, an English, a P E, if they haven't taken health yet. So there's still five or six required periods for them to take. And those are the five or six that they are fulfilling while they're here. And then they have the privilege to leave, uh, or come in, or come in late.
I mean, could it backfire on a, on a kid that screws around a little too much senior year and then they, by not having some extra credits, they?
No, because they're still taking the classes that they're required to take. They have the credits. Credits aren't the option, it's the required classes. So they would still be taking those classes no matter what. So they know that, I mean, for instance, when I taught elementary economics, twelfth grade, one first day came on my mouth, talking to those seniors, first day of school. I need my class to graduate. So that's the essence of those students, when they're taking the, the history, the English, science, and social study, and the math, they need those classes anyways.
Just for liability sake, um, I don't know about the rest of you, but I was pretty good at my mom's signature by the time I was a senior. If they're filling out this, you know, we all chuckle when we've all done it. If, if, Mr. DeCaro, I guess this goes to you, if, um, they forged their parent's signature and now they're getting out half-day and they get in trouble, is that going to fall back on us?
I don't think so.
We're going to do an all-call, once scheduling's done, with those that have signed that. So there will be a call for my home parents indicating that the son or daughter has scheduled to marriage.
I, I think our job is to educate them and I, I totally center side what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing with that, but I just think that we need to do better and...
If we had more choose work release, we've had as many as twenty to thirty in a school year choose work release, because that's currently on the books. There's no difference.
There's no work, we know that anymore.
So, I mean, you've, we've had thirty seniors at one time leave early.
But they're working.
Well, these, one of these things are working too.
But then there's, that, those people won't be affected, they'll still be getting out on work release. But they have to prove that they're working, that they're doing something, that they're not just, you know, to me, I have a feeling you're going to hit that, that, that group of kids who are just getting by and, you know, oh, they're just not going to go, and they're going to come in late, or they're, they're going to leave early. And, you know, those extra classes, maybe something will spark them, you know? You just don't know, I just, I, I just feel that our job is to provide the education and I think that we're setting, I, I think we're, we're setting a bad example by saying, yeah, it doesn't matter, you reached your, you know, you've done what you had to do and if you want to take it, if you can. And I, I see what you're saying, it's a parent's choice, but they could also come in and say, I don't want my kid to go to school for two hours every day or, or two periods, if they really felt that way, without giving them that option. I just don't like that we're giving the kids an option, because, let's face it, at that age, you have your overachievers and you have the rest of them. And if you're giving, if you're going to ask me, do I have to go to school now or I can come in third period? I'll come in in third period, I'm sleeping. So I think you're just, you're just letting them get away with something that they need to be kind of held accountable to, to at least be here. My opinion.
I see your point, I somewhat agree, I think you're, um, this is giving kids an easy way out and letting them get maybe a little bit lazier. I think I mentioned before is, um, you know, they get some, some bad habits before they head off to college and they get hit with a big dose of reality whenever they're taking the full load and, uh, and maybe they've created some bad habits that are going to come back and bite them when they go off to college. I don't know, I guess it's really going to depend on the kid.
Any other questions or discussions regarding this topic?
I think, you know, school would should interfere with scheduling. That's, that's a bit, uh, that's a way to be sure we should have.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
I lose my two senses, I've had three girls, you know, graduate from Elwood City in the last couple of years and, um, you know, they could go days, you know, they come home and they're like, we didn't do anything this week. We did this, we got pulled out for that and, I mean, but it was still, um, I don't think there's jobs in Elwood, there's not enough to provide for work release. I just don't see the benefit of kids getting out of school and doing nothing. I wish there was an alternative we had, an alternative to make them go in the classrooms, help with the special education, help with something, do something. Because...
Do now, right? Get them more involved?
Something, I wish there was something more for them. You know, ones that want to, that might go on to be teachers, they could be in a club, that they could go to class and help teaching, and, and, I don't know. I think if you, if you put a little time into them, seniors, um, it's like their last hope.
So, just on a personal note, my son does it.
Right.
And he wrestles, he's in a wrestling college and it's not like he's a bum or lazy or him going to a job or, you know, it's like, I mean, he, this is what he did. We had signed off on it, that he would get out early, go home and actually sleep before wrestling practice, or go home and do homework before wrestling practice. Because it was, so it just fit into what?
It fit into his lifestyle, one hundred percent, yeah.
And it, and it, he's not going to college, he's, you know, so...
Or maybe the younger kids want this privilege, so they work harder to get all their requirements in, so when they become a senior.
And he's taking oceanography, he's taking computer gaming also as a senior, he's taking his required classes, his English, his math, his sciences, his, he's done with his social studies, only have three credits, so it's different, but I mean, it's, it was an option that the school offered and we took it. And it just fit him and he's, it's not like he's, he's motivated, he's going to school, he's in a wrestle, he's going to, so, I mean, it just fit into his lifestyle, we chose that, we could very easily say to his parents, you know what, you're going to school all day. We chose that, we could very easily say to his parents, you know what, you're going to school all day. But we didn't. So I mean, like Mr. Lake said, it's an option that it fit into where?
And like you said, it's an option, it's not like a demand, it's not like they have to.
Right, and again, it's parental decision. It's, if they want their child to take electives or they see some class or, even the student is interested in a subject that they, they want to take, they still have that, hey, Mom, I want to take this class, so they take it. If not, they don't. And it leaves an option, an opening for those underclassmen and getting stuck in study halls or it's not there. So we solved our issue as far as scheduling and we've got a lot of experience in master schedules. We've been doing them for a long time and again, it's an option. One year you might not have any kids take advantage of it, you might have five, and then one year you might have twenty-five. Just depends on the.
So what do you keep to the cyber school, so?
Is that just takes a cyber course?
Any course that they, that we offer through RCI, Mr. Sobers finds, that's always an option.
So these kids could be taking the class in school, say ninth period or first period?
No, because we need a teacher with them. When he sets up on cyber, that could be done anywhere. If we have that option to put them in a room, then yes, we could, but now that's just another, it's a staff member that I need for cyber classes, ninth period or eighth period. Where, I don't, I need a body for that.
I thought cyber was taught, they self-teach.
Somebody's got to be with the kids, if you can put them in a room.
Synchronous and asynchronous, so synchronous is they're running along with the teachers, almost like a live classroom shot. The asynchronous model is what we've kind of adopted where our teachers still support and do the grading and do the paperwork and provide options for the students and, you know, help the students through. But again, students usually typically at home. We have, we could have kids that come in to do a hybrid schedule where they come in for part of the school day if they can't replicate a class online, then we need to come in for a chemistry class or a physics class and just can't get that information online. And then we do offer that hybrid option and help do the rest of the classes. So we've been very flexible with that and trying to meet the needs of students and it's really helped from losing a lot of kids to, typical charter cyber schools.
What other area districts, say in the county, offer the senior privileges like?
When I went to my last track time principal's meeting, I asked that question. Nobody has a label for it like we put on it, we see the privilege. Everybody does work release a little bit different. I'm not going to mention schools here in public, but one school has a parent sign off that a kid has a job and they never check it the rest of the year. Two or three schools are like this. We currently with our work release have a teacher that checks pay stubs every two weeks. Some schools do that, other schools don't. So did they necessarily put a label on it? No. Where we really got the idea was from Center for State of Manheim, bigger school district. I actually tried to contact them to ask some specifics in their school districts. So big that I got put off on about three different people. But did find their policy online, locally, I think we also, yeah, slipped it off. I thought it was, somebody else in thought our county, but everybody dices it up a little bit different, you know, on how to do work release or privilege.
I remember something too. Years ago when I first got here as assistant principal, we used to have probably about sixty kids that used to be on work release. But there was no checking on those kids. It was just, it was, kids would say they had a job at the beginning of the year and if they lost their job, there was no bringing them back. It was just, okay, you've signed out at the beginning of the year. Once we started regulating it and had a teacher in charge checking his pay stubs, it dropped down to like thirteen.
Fifteen, is she?
Fifteen, so it just varies as far as, but if you check them, you know, we have kids, sixty kids, they, I guarantee it, they give the credit where it's due, so.
Senior privilege isn't just work release, is that correct? I'd get, I'd give a favor, reach the criteria where you can get out for any.
Two periods.
Two periods, right.
Hundreds.
Well, this is something that originally heard about, I thought it was something, something I could have supported. Of course, everybody knows my thing was I almost didn't know enough about it, studied before the board was informed. Mrs. Petrelli had brought up some interesting points. And I think that one of the concerns is someone like Mr. McSine's not the exception. I'm sure there are students who are going to use that time, but well, I think her concern is.
It's not the ones that are going to take the time.
I understand. All right. But I know, heard more about it than I can. All right, anything else under new business?
Since we're still speaking about scheduling and I had mentioned this earlier and I think I mentioned it at the last meeting too about the generous offer from Forge about getting our fab lab together. And I know you're still working and hoping and trying, but, you know, you guys are scheduling for next year so I'm guessing this is not part of the schedule for us to have this. And we're still down to what we need is for the teacher. Is there more than that? Because we haven't really been updated per se in how, how things are progressing with your.
Typically, what we have and what I'm trying to package together for you is the type of programs, the workspace, the curriculum, you know, the curriculum. So I'm confident I can lay in the lab itself, the materials, the, the, the lab. Curriculum is quite expensive, something that we're looking at base to pull out on boards and it's something that's usual for students and not to get enough of, in terms of like a free engineering experience. So I'm digging and scraping for more money to get that together and I'm also still looking for money to provide for the instructor in this case. So I have a meeting on the fifteenth with some individuals and as a district, as a committee at the high school, we're looking at how can we do this to make it, make the most sense for the students. But if we can lay those pieces together to make it make sense for everybody, I'm sure Mr. Lake can go back and schedule and make the changes needed that we can offer to students as soon as we can come to special.
Well, again, you know, there's a lot of things that I'm still learning in scheduling and timing and so on. And I feel like there's a lot that I, I still have to be told or taught or whatever. I mean, I, I was so hopeful that we were going to be able to bring this in, bring this in in two thousand, actually, we were hoping this year, this halfway through the year. And I would hope as a board that we can discuss if we need a teacher, he can pull the rest together. I don't feel that the Forge is going to wait forever for us. I think we've been given a gift that we are abusing. And I feel like if, whatever we need to do, we need to do it and we need to do it now so that it is there and ready for next year before we lose their beautiful gift that they're giving us. And I would like to think that the rest of you are feeling the same way and I think we've become so overwhelmed with all the extra things that are thrown at us. And again, we're still not able to sit down and look ahead and plan the things that we'd like to see happen. So I'm, you know, I would like to see us move forward. If that's what you need and we can provide a teacher for you and you can pull the rest of this together for next year, then I would like to see us be able to sit down and talk about that as a board and get this resolved so that we are all, all moving in the same direction so that, you know, we do offer a curriculum, we get some more, some more opportunities for our kids and, you know, maybe we need to look at hiring, you know, what else can we offer, what do we need to do? I feel like we need to invest back into these kids' future. And if they're having problems filling slots and kids don't have enough to take, then, you know, we need to find a way to make that happen, especially with this lab because this is way too important for us. We're not going to have another opportunity like this.
I would like, thank you, came down to, you know, this, this teacher, for, 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 and whatnot.
I would too. If that's, if that's all you're waiting for, I, I'd like to send, we can, we can say yes because I, I really want to see that in place for next year.
So it's, it's time, we have a couple of meetings coming up, two meetings coming up. Actually, Mr. McSine too, as we've actually looked at some changes that we probably have to make to the initial layout. Forge was really offering metalworking equipment and it's a lot, it's a lot of money. But what we actually need is more of the technology side, we actually make materials. So we have to kind of go back and re-drop that and ask them, you know, we need these materials, can you support that? Forge needs engineers, Forge needs people like that to work for them. So I'm trying to get them to see the worth in that because they were really upfront with whatever metal machine we want, we'll get that figured right now, right now we can get it. What I need them to see is that not only do we need that end of it, we need to make materials so we get kids to think, engineer, make, so that they can actually get to that point where they are employable. Hopefully, an employee that they can use. And I think we see the worth in that. And our end runs with the point of foundation, with the application with them, that looks really positive. Where's the grant through I U three for STEAM that's due May first and probably term run time about June fifth, it's a twenty-five dollar grant. Between those multiple sources, like material wise, I think we'll be way more than covered in labs. But we're saying to be next week, think about the logistics of all this, how, how you see this stuff because it's a little bit different than what.
Mr. Worthley did it?
Yeah. Not only different than that, but even different than what Mr. Kennedy has, well, on the elementary because again, we still have that space. We need to design it differently so that our students can access it and get the most work out of those materials.
My comment to John was I don't want this to be a class. I don't want it to be a shop class. I want it to be a program.
I thought it was like an engineering program, basically what it was going to be.
But metal, but metal is just one part of that. Like if, like the Forge is, you know, said they're going to donate metalworking blades and so on, we're looking at, you know, three D printers and things that, you know, starting at the elementary, that's a whole different program. And I don't want it to be shoved down in a shop, I want it to be in the library, like I mentioned before.
Right, I know, that's what you talked about.
I've already talked to Aaron Parkinson, the librarian, you know, let's, you know, reconstruct this library into a learning commons, you know, two O three lab can be that maker space lab, that area in the back could be, so it's not just, I want it to be a place where teachers are going to bring kids that are going to collaborate and solve problems and projects and project based. So it's not just a class, it's not just an area where, you know, where one teacher has metalwork or a metal shop. It's got to be a whole collaboration where a social studies teacher can bring a person to this, you know, a class into this area and do some things.
But aren't you talking about two different things though? Because it seems to me if he, if we need a teacher to run this, these specific things, then that is going to be.
Well, you've got two O three, you've got a class over there, you've got another area, you've got the library, which I want to change also. So talking to, you know, the librarian, it's not something that's going to happen overnight. It's going to be a process, it's renovating the library, changing the way the library looks, dividing it, you know, walls that move, you know, so. I encourage you to go look at other school districts that have learning commons like that that include all those ideas of, you know, creativity and.
But the metal, going back to what the Forge originally asked for, is that what Riverside has, I have to ask?
It's, yeah, Riverside has something.
Very similar? I thought they wanted to do something different here than they had at Riverside.
They wanted to closely replicate what they did at Riverside here.
Oh, okay.
And what they had to assume then was we really want to invest heavily in the maker end of all this because I think you're going to drive a lot more creativity than you're going to get a lot more out of the experiences that they're initially designing at Riverside. So I still have that dream, that focus of getting the students to have that true maker experience where they can go in and develop, pre-fabricate, engineer, and look at all those aspects because it's very, very different than what they do at Riverside.
Right.
But the Forge, I think the Forge sees the worth in it. I think the Forge also knows the pain to make people that are, understand how to use their machines, understand how to, do a horizontal boring mill by the time they get on the forge. They don't have to run a horizontal boring mill. I think that's important, it's definitely important, but that doesn't fit the needs of all of the students that have. They're not, like I said, not looking for money now, I definitely want to use, I'm utilizing. I just need a target and help them to, you know, kind of solve a problem for the programs here.
And if it's not, if that's not what they're looking to do, is that something that, is that a program that we could still utilize here? I mean, is it still something that, that you think that there would be interest in? Doing it just that, what they're talking about as it sits right now on the table?
I would think if you look at, you know, we, we have a comprehensive CTC. We have the Lawrence County Current Technical Center that we rely on heavily to teach our students those skills. Riverside isn't that case, they only have a part-time current technical center. So that, that skill, that subset, I'm not going to tell you I don't, I don't want kids to learn metal skills. I don't want to tell you the kids aren't going to do that well. If you look at Marcella Shell Industries, if you look at the upcoming industries, those kids are going to do very, very well for themselves. But, you know, we can better apply money here and look at the actual maker side of all this and replicate all the way through the programs. You're going to have a comprehensive program from kindergarten all the way through senior high in terms of that maker, that engineering type, that's where we kind of.
Want, that's what we want, right. Oh, I agree totally with you. I'm just, you know, not wanting to, you know, upset the table with this thing on.
It's a, it's a very delicate task, Mr. Stevens.
The, the high tech leg that the Forge bought to Riverside, bought the identical one for Lawrence County attack. And since Riverside, people count it as a kind of one of those students going there and tap that button. They bought that one specifically for.
For Lawrence, oh, for Riverside.
Because our students, you have.
That's the one and use the other one.
Yeah, I, we definitely have a huge opportunity here. We're not going to leave it down, we're not, like I said, keep pushing the buttons and putting their ass off. We'll, we'll get money and we'll walk through that, so. I just want to make it make sense for everybody, make sure we go right there. It's, it's a program, it's a process, it really is, it's not like a, I just can't probably make some traditional.
Oh, I know that you've been working at it very diligently for a very long time.
We have a great team here that's going to make it happen, it's too important for us to serve.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that we are, we're all on the same page because I think there's a lot of things that we're not all on the same page with. So that if, if we need to act more quickly, that we are ready to do that and not, it's not sprung and, oh, you don't have it.
We appreciate, the administration appreciates that.
Thank you, Mr. Sobers. Anything else for the board, Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, I'm sorry I had to leave for a minute, major call. And I would like to comment on the senior, this special program. When I first read it, I thought, how is this? And I'm sure lots of people thought that, especially when I found out about the ants passing the PSSAs out of the park. You know, I told them, I called Mr. McSine, I told them that I had it on good authority that ten of them were coached. And that they really weren't going to pass fourth grade. Anyway, that was a little bit of fun living in that program. After giving this a lot of thought, the senior, the idea, there are a lot of areas that we, for coveries. Not so much that we're just saying, hit the road, done enough is for nation. You know, that's not what we're saying. I think what we're saying here, these are about to become an adult. Within one year of having adult privileges, okay? So let's give you just a couple of privileges that the other students don't have and let's see how you handle it. So make it part of the educational process. If they're properly controlled, only the students that are on track to graduate, not disciplinary problems. If there are disciplinary problems, no, you stay in school. Okay? If they're on track, they're ready to go, they're starting, all right, let's ease you in the adult group just a little bit. Test them, test them, test them, a couple of periods a day. Let's see how you handle it. If you screw up, do you wind up doing something illegal? Well, the guys would have finally looked at you and would be talking to you, you know? Parents, of course, have to be part of this and like she said, we've all done it, so not just a signature. We have to have had a personal contact, one administrator has to have a contact. Personal contact with a parent. Personal contact with the parent, got their approval. Okay? Properly controlled, I think this couldn't solve their problem with scheduling and cutting the younger kids out of programs, which happened even back when I was in school. Woodshop, you couldn't get in woodshop with Mr. McSiney. If you were a freshman, sophomore, or a junior, back, sorry, you don't have your... But I really, this could be, this could be out of the table. But anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. All right, with nothing further, we will adjourn to go into, oh, I'm sorry, go back to the visitors, I forgot.
With all my friends. I'm just, I hope, this is a comment, because I know you can't talk about personnel, that's in your executive. But I just hope that with the retirees, you really consider not losing those positions. As a teacher, I know what it takes to do things in elementary school. And if you put more things on, when you're already asking teachers to do data, to do DIPs, and to do all these programs that are being asked of us as educators now, it would be really hard if you eliminate positions because of funding. And I'm sure with them there, they're at the top of the list. So they make up here. When you bring in teachers that are younger and start out, you're obviously still saving money, but you're still not losing positions, because that's really important. And it's really hard, because I sit here as a parent, but my passion is my teaching. And it's been my passion for 17 years. And, like, I go back and forth if I should move my son, who's a sixth grader, to a different district. A, come to me with, to get what I see happens in my district, or to send him somewhere else around here. My daughter, obviously, who's in seventh grade, she's invested with friends and things that are here that I can't take away from her. But I just hope that you think about that when you cut these teaching positions and you do things, because it affects the good kids as well as the ones that don't care and are never here and you'll never see their parents. But I do it because I do care, and my kids want to go to college. And I want them to get what they need to go to college. Obviously, you all know that my brother teaches here, because it's not a secret. And I do things for me, because I'm the oldest, and I was the one that did things first. David doesn't talk to me about things, because that's my brother, if you really knew him. And I had pride in the fact that my kids were going to get to have their uncle in this district. And I didn't go here, we went to Riverside, because we're on that side of Elwood. But it just bothers me, things that I do hear from parents around who aren't educated. And I, yes, I am educated. And I just hope that when you make these decisions, that you're doing what's right for these kids, and not just my own, but for other kids that don't have the families that stick up for them. And I am, I'm really nervous about what's happening in Elwood. Why would you want to come to Elwood City? I can't even think about selling my house, because there's so many for sale. Because what's in Elwood, and it's true, there's no jobs anymore. The businesses have moved out besides the Forge that's still here. And so it's a scary situation when you have kids in any district now. But especially here, when there's not classes that are offered. And I was going to say a spiel on show papers, but that's just down the tubes too. I get why you would want kids to be able to have that freedom to go. I get it now that I hear what you said. But at the same time, it's just a scary situation, because my son isn't in music. He's not in extra things, because my son is an introvert and can't handle that kind of stuff. So I think, okay, what's he going to get with Elwood? Because there aren't electives here, that there aren't other places, that he could do, and it's intrinsically for him. So, that's my two cents, that it does, it scares me. And I have to make decisions about what's right for my son, whether he wants to be here or not, because he's still in fifth grade and I can still dictate his life, unlike my daughter, who said, "I'm not moving." And I will be with Uncle David if you move, because I'm not leaving Elwood and my friends. So, I just hope you think about that when you do staffing and you think about the kids, and not just about the business that, yes, it's a business, but it's these kids that are our future. And if we don't have things for them to do, why would they want to be here?
Thank you very much.
I'd like to see what you have.
No, it's just like things that are offered, like at my, where I teach and different things, so.
If you wouldn't mind, you can have it. It's just not mine.
Okay.
Thank you, Ken. All right, now, we will adjourn to go into executive session for personnel.
Does this recess to me? Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, when you talk about your kids and just how that's...
That's right.
It's not just my kids. My passion is teaching, and I say that I want my kids at school more than I want them. It's what I do. I don't do that. This is just where I am. So it's just... Oh, good. I like that info. I don't have to gather it, you did it for me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, well, it's...
I don't know. I think we need to feel a little bit better. I mean, you are nothing, we're bare bones, and it's a problem. People are impressed. I don't know, it's not easy to find out. I've never looked at that. I mean, I know, but I know, like, you know, when Lawrence County, you know, there's always classical, ceramics and all that. We lost our teachers, I mean, they were never hired. So we are, what, like, can classes, people, they have emotions? That's what I'm talking about. Woodshop, it's for the ethics, that's like...
Interesting. People like me, yeah, I became a hairstylist, but taking ceramics class, drawing class, that stimulates you. Well, yeah, but you got to pay. This is public education. And that's here. That was my brain, I'm more creative than intellectual.